And planning board on Tuesday, the 24th of January 2023. Renee, please, can you take the roll call?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Canfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
Also let the record show that our Assistant Town Attorney Edward D'Zaro, Town Manager Greg Dunham, and myself are also present.
Thanks, Renee. Thank you, Greg. Full service this morning.
I know. So now we move on to the minutes from the last meeting of December the 15th. We'll have a chance to review them. Are there any comments? Otherwise, can I ask for a motion, please, to approve them?
I'm at the motion approved in a minute.
Second one.
Mrs. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Canfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murph?
Yes. Are there any additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or rearrangements of agenda items this morning?
No.
Thank you. And in terms of our future meeting dates, it's quite scary to see June on there in the middle of January. Is there anyone who isn't available for any of those dates, please?
I probably will not be available in May-June for the summer.
Okay, thanks, Mandy. And with that part of proceedings, we move on to the public hearing section. Has there been any ex parte communication concerning the applications in front of us today? No. Thank you. Renee, can you administer the oath, please?
Anybody?
Thanks, Renee. And so we move on, Gary, to the first application. The floor is yours.
I definitely want to say sorry about last month and missing the meeting. For the record, my name is Gary Aleopolis. Our address is 1045 East Atlantic Avenue. I am with GE Architecture, and I am representing Davin and Julie Gabauer. Up on the screen is what is currently under construction with Mau Construction. I believe we're looking at as far as a date of finishing construction about April. One of the things that we're running into, I guess, go ahead, Renee, if you could hit again, just so we get the location again.
I'm trying, it's slow.
Well, maybe we went too far, but that's fine. We're basically located off of Polo Drive. I think one of the things that we're running into, and we're actually running into this with several of our communities, is a combination of things. It's actual federal regulations and state regulations with regards to finished floor. Gulfstream Road is kind of unique, actually, all of Gulfstream is unique in that you guys do have a lot of Kili areas that are not typical in South Florida. And one of the things that we're running into along Gulfstream Road is the elevations of our adjacent neighbors. More and more, I think we're going to be running into issues with regards to the beautiful homes that we see like in Gulfstream, those one-story homes that are older. The state's pretty much coming down, and you're not going to be able to renovate them the way you'd like to because there's so many regulations about the finished floor height. And that's kind of what we're running into today. Renee, if you could, next. So here's where we're here for, under your LDRs, requesting the variance from the required maximum wall height of six feet along the north property line to seven foot ten as per the Town of Gulfstream Zoning Code Regulation Section 7187, Section 4 for walls. Next, please. Can you go one more, Renee, please? Okay, so here's what we're dealing with regards to our proposed client. We're at a finished floor elevation of eight feet. Our neighbors to the south are at 6770. And then our neighbors to the north, and that's the part that we're talking about, the retaining wall, they are at 4.95. You could hit it again, Renee, please. And then one more time. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go back one. Sorry about that. Okay, so we're showing all the different grades around our property. And one of the things is, is that even if we went further south at Lakeview and Gulfstream, the elevation is actually at a seven-foot mark. And then when you get down to the end or the north side of our property along with our neighbors, the road drops down to approximately one foot and a half, one foot ten. What I did have in this is that we're talking about how we're building up the back of our site and how we're trying to work with our adjacent neighbors. If we hit it one more time, Renee, this would be the code part that I've been talking about. So FEMA regulations, we're in a flood zone of six feet. That's NAVD, so what I'm talking about, that is above the sea level. Florida code requires you to go a foot higher than the base. The other part that we looked at is what's FEMA's pending code, and that's eight feet. So our client decided to go to the pending code, figuring that they're being proactive with regards to elevation heights. Next, please, Renee. And again. So I'm going through, these are just the north elevation that we're looking at. You are seeing just a diagram of the proposed retaining wall and the decorative aluminum fence on top. If you could hit it again. These are the two elevations that we're dealing with. You got your six and then your seven. And then one more time. That's actually what we're building with. One of the things about our retaining wall, we're actually just six inches below, I should say above the grade, so we're not trying to max this out. If you could please hit it again. And when you're talking about a three-foot-ten-high retaining wall, one of the benefits this brings to the surrounding neighbors is that we're actually holding a lot more water on our site versus if we were flat and level. Typically, if you're getting the heavy rains, you're going to have to control some of the water, but most of it's going to be running off in different directions. We're actually holding a lot more. Next, Renee, please. And on the property, we have a four-foot decorative aluminum fence that's going around. That's getting you to that seven-foot-ten. You know, I think sometimes people prefer solid walls. I, as an architect, prefer the aluminum portions. I do believe it helps the neighbors. It allows the breeze to come through versus when you're building solid walls. Next, please. This diagram is pretty much the same there, but it is actually using what we term the NAVD, which is how we handle all our elevations above grade. Next, please. And what we are proposing is a porticarpus hedge all along there. We were trying to work with the neighbor. We wanted to find out if they wanted to consider some options that we had for this hedge. Later in the presentation, I'll show you how we are actually moving forward with this. Next, please. And again. One more. Again. And again. Now let's do one more. Okay, so basically, what we are looking at an area, our client is the proposed lot in the middle. To the left is actually the house that's on Lakeview. What we did with them was we were able to work with them. We actually went onto their property. We regraded their property. Now, what helped was the fact is that their house is higher up. It is at 6.7, but when you got to that portion of the property, we regraded it so that we could raise the earth. And then we were able to actually split the property line with a larger hedge. So what we have is we have a porticarpus over there that's actually one foot on their property and one foot on our client's property. That allows us to go to a higher hedge, so we're able to get a hedge planted in at seven and eight feet. So that worked out fine there. Again, on the south side, that's what we were thinking about trying to do. Again, I haven't been involved in trying to communicate with the neighbors, so I'm not sure. I know a letter was written, but I don't even know how that letter was given to them. So to be fair, I'm not sure how the communication's been.
A letter from who?
A letter from Davin Gabauer. Yeah. So what's happening is on that side, we are showing, we're seeing the construction part. There is the retaining wall already in, and now we're dealing with the sloping of the grades. If we could go to the next one, Renee, please. This is just looking at, again, the south side, how that wall's been in and the hedge is in now. Next, please. Again. It's kind of showing, we were starting out with similar grades on the south, and now the actual new grades are pretty much matching ours. Next, please. This is a view that we're showing along the north property line. Next, please. And one more. And it's basically just indicating, again, the retaining wall is about as low as we wanted to go so that we weren't actually disrupting all the neighbors' properties at the three-foot-ten. Next, please. And one more. And again. So this is looking to the north. The fence is actually at six feet. It's a construction fence. That is our retaining wall. They're starting to backfill it all. But you are looking at the proposed aluminum fence would be actually higher than that by another one foot ten. Next, please. Again. This is looking at the south side. We are going to be having a decorative aluminum fence going on that retaining wall, which obviously will be blocked by the hedge. Next, please. Again. There you go. So now we're going to cut a section. I think this actually kind of tells exactly what we are explaining. I'm sorry, I kind of went on and on about this, but you could, again, Renee. So we have constructed the retaining wall, the three-foot-ten wall that we're talking about. It is one foot off of the property lines, so it is on our side. Next, please. These, again, are just talking about the different elevations that we're dealing with with our neighbors' finished floor elevation and ours. Next. Here, you're seeing all the dimensions. We emphasize the blue again because there is a lot of grade there that we actually are going to be holding, retaining water and stuff, which we do think, like I said, is a benefit. Next, please. And so now with regards to the options, we were looking at doing a larger porticarpus hedge at eight feet. In order to do that, you need two feet. So we would have needed a foot of our neighbor's property and a foot of ours. Where we didn't hear back from them, we are proposing one foot on our side of the property line and then on top of the retaining wall, another porticarpus hedge. So you will have a solid planting going on that will go through the aluminum decorative fence.
Wait a moment. You're going a little too quick for me. What are you proposing? Repeat it again.
So right here, we have a one-foot piece of land. We're planting four feet of porticarpus.
Okay.
On top of the-
That'll grow to-
Well, that'll actually grow, depending on how they want to maintain it. It would definitely fill out and keep growing to eight feet.
Right, okay.
And then on the south side of the aluminum decorative fence, we have another four-foot high porticarpus.
On your, on the owner's side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, actually, both are on the owner's property.
Okay, because you said you were a foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Next, please, Renee. Again. Okay, so I believe this is going to be the criteria that you all will be looking at with regards to your decision today. What specific conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved in which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district? Next, please, Renee. There you go. Along Gulfstream Road, as I kind of explained before, from the south to the north, the road actually drops down an elevation of 7.12 feet down to 1.83. So you know, you're dealing with a few feet there. That is not anything that had to do with my client. Next, please. Okay, so did the special condition and circumstances result from the actions of our applicant? I would say no. Next, please. Will the granting of the variance offer upon the applicant any special privileges that is denied by the zoning code to other lands, buildings, or structures in the same zoning district? Again, I would say no. Again, I think this is all based on FEMA regulations and the existing topography of the Gulfstream Road. How would a little interpretation of the provision of the zoning ordinance deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the same terms of the ordinance and work unnecessary and undue hardship onto the applicant? Situation is a direct result of the FEMA regulations requiring homes to have a much higher finished floor elevation than the surrounding existing properties and streets. Currently, the base flood elevation is at six feet. Florida Building Code requires seven, and the pending code requires eight, and that's where we're at. Is the variance request the minimum variance that makes possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structures? We feel yes. The proposed retaining wall is literally six inches above the proposed grade for 3420 Gulfstream Road and is 310 in height above the adjacent property with the decorative aluminum fence on top. Next, please. Will granting the variance permit any prohibited use to be established or reestablished? We feel no. We feel this condition is unique to this property. Next. Is the requested variance consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan? We feel yes. And last but not least, will the variance be in harmony with the general intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance and not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare? We feel yes. We feel it will be in harmony with the neighborhood and in the intent of the zoning code. Again, we're saying that this site, we're retaining more rainwater. We feel that that's a benefit to all the neighbors. We also feel that the fence height obviously is protecting from unsupervised children that might enter onto this property and go into the pool. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Before I pass it over, I've got two questions that spring to mind. One is to Renee. I understand the letter that went from the owner to the neighbor. Has there been any feedback from our correspondence?
From ours, no.
Okay, thanks. And the other one was, Gary, in the presentation, there's a lot of elevations, but in our pack, we didn't receive any information in advance.
There was, I gave you what they gave me.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, in our pack, we didn't have any of that. As Bob said, you know, to go through the numbers, the elevations of this distance, there wasn't anything in there. Yeah, they explained it, but-
I got you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, there was a few things that would have been helpful. I think in our review.
Sorry.
Okay, so as we know, and thanks for the application, for the presentation, the condition of granting a variance is we have to meet all eight points. So please bear that in mind for any questions we have. With that, any questions from the board?
I have a general, kind of big question. Why, why did you choose those heights? Why the four-foot decorative fence and the 310 on the-
Well, what happened was on the retaining wall, we were trying to keep it as low as possible. It's also based on when you come out of the house. So at the backside of the house, we have a six-inch drop-down coming out onto a porch and another six-inch. So what happens is we back ourselves in from that point, and that's what brings us over. We actually create swales around the property to actually contain the water. But then we literally just went six inches above that grade, and that got us to 310. The height for the fence is by code for pools. Now technically, it's for the outside. It's not for the inside, but in reality, we also wouldn't want somebody either falling over or something like on the Gabauer side, so that's why we weren't the four-foot height.
I guess one point to clear up. You had mentioned having one foot for the hedge, and then you were trying to get the neighbor to buy into that as well, one foot on their side.
Right.
Staff suggested two feet inside of the property line, and we wouldn't need a variance. What's the relation between that situation?
So it was more of our client because we're actually dealing with more than just two feet. Because what would happen is you got the wall, and now you're going to go with another hedge on the inside. So it was actually coming out to three feet. So our client was just saying they really didn't want to start eating up more of their land, and that's what this was about.
Okay. Okay.
So-
That's kind of where you get into the question of, is that the minimum variance that you could have? Because if you can move it in, you don't actually need the variance, and that's where I'm tripping at.
Yeah, I think, Gary, as you know us pretty well by now, there's a couple of things that jump out to me. I must have put them out there. Number two is always an issue. It's the fact, is it, you know, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant? This variance application is because, as you just said, the applicant took the decision rather going down the route that was suggested by staff, that they would prefer to go down this route, but it was their choice. The next part, the next one which jumps out at me is, number one, I know you said that this is a unique situation for this property, but we've actually had a situation where, I think it was, and I looked up, in Polo, which is also with the FEMA regulations, they managed to basically meet the FEMA regulations without going for a variance request. And for that reason, I don't think it is unique. Because although, often, let's be clear, all the single property, all the single properties that are there, at some point, as you said, it's more and more difficult for the state rules and federal rules and all the good stuff. It's going to be, they're all facing a challenge. Because we've already seen, there's been a development in Polo already that has accommodated that without going for a variance. And that's one of the things that jumps out for me. Number eight, yeah, it's subjective. It always is a difficult one, absolutely. But that's, those are the, those are the two that jump out at me. And the fact is, there are other options. And I'm not speaking for the board generally, but personally, a variance is when you're in a rock and a really serious hard place. There's a chance for taking another route here. So I'm afraid, from my point of view, I couldn't support this application for a variance.
Agreed.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
In that case, Gary, if you want to come back to any comments on that?
No, I mean, I see where you're coming from. I don't think it'll be this board. I think most likely, it's going to be down the road that you're going to be changing because every municipality is going to eight feet now because the fact is, but it is your code as of today.
It is.
So I get it.
We know.
I get it.
Yeah.
So thanks, Gary, for stepping up for that one. In that case, we know our options. If we follow down, we have five, we have seven options. Would someone like to make a motion taking account of what we, I think, is the general position of the board?
So just if I can interject for a second. So in line with what we've done in the past, if you could reference specific criteria and numbers to recommend that are not met in your motion for assistance for the town commission when they review this?
It's sufficient, I've been going through all eight, because we have to meet all eight.
You do. Right, and that would be fine.
In that case, who's going to go for the motion preparation and recommendation?
Yeah, one.
Yeah. I focus on doing it only. Once I got to one, I said the site is not peculiar.
And does the-
It's very common.
Does the description go in there too, or you just want a list of-
You can just say the number.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to recommend denial of a variance from the provisions in Section 7187, seven, to permit the construction of a three-foot-ten-high retaining wall with a four-foot decorative aluminum fence based on our findings that conditions number one, three, and five were not met.
I'll second it.
Anything else? Do you want me to add something?
Number two for me.
Number two. And number two, were not met.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
You, Bob.
I'll second. Renee?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Canfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. And so we move on to the second application in front of us today. Gary, what are the consequences?
Give me just a second.
For the record, Gary Aleopolis, GE Architecture. Our address is 1045 East Atlantic Avenue. I am here today representing Gina Adeo. We are proposing a new home on this property. It is a two-story structure. What we've chosen to do is try to follow, obviously, the guidelines with regards to style. We think this home, which is a Bermuda-style home, is in keeping with what Gulfstream is about. One of the things that we'll go through is obviously there is a exception that was pointed out to us with regards to the rear waterway of 50 feet, whether it be that setback of 30 feet getting reduced down to it. We are actually not requesting that, but we'll go through that in our presentation.
So you're not asking for that?
Not asking for, no, we are asking for an exception. We're just not going down to 30 feet. It's actually 40 feet.
I saw it, 40. It's all, oh, yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Renee, I guess we can go to the next one, which would be our location. And if you could go again, please. So we are located in the Cove Basin, up in the corner there, just south of Banyan Road and just west of Polo Drive. Again, please. Again. And again. Here's our proposed site plan. We are showing here our various site setbacks that we do have. If you hit it one more time, Renee.
I'm sorry.
One of the things that we're shading in on the right-hand side, I'm sorry, the left-hand side, which is the water side, is the effective lot area that we've taken out of our calculation. Hit one more. Okay, so there's our square footages, which we've based everything on the effective lot area. Also, you have a total of, that's allowed underneath your FAR is 7,467, and we are just shy of that at 7,600, I'm sorry, 464. Next, please, Renee. And again. And one more. Okay, so again, these are, this is the ground floor. And again, one of the things that we're talking about is that exception. One of the things that happens is with the 50-foot setback, anything that's going to be closer to the water edge would only be a one-story element. We will be pointing that out to you that it is. Next, please, Renee. Oh, I'm sorry, you know, stay right there for a second. I did want to point out, architecturally, one of your criterias when you have a front-covered entrance, that has to be a minimum of eight feet in deep. We are actually highlighting that it is 11 feet, so we are showing that for you. And again, similar to Bob, your earlier question, we're actually at 40 feet, eight and three-quarters that we're going to be requesting. Next, please. Again. Again. And again. So all the dimensions that we're showing here are actually from the setback line. So it's just showing you that we are very well into the property, off of the property lines. One of your other design criteria is that the second floor needs to be at least five feet off of the front ground floor elevation. And as you'll see there, we are 23 feet five back, so we're definitely setting it back. The other part of the code, Renee, if you hit it again, is that the second floor cannot be more than 50% of the ground floor, and we are in fact less than 50%.
Well, how much further? Did you say 23?
We are, I'm trying to read it here. It looks like-
Can you show me?
23.5.
23. Got it. Okay, I see it.
What about on the sides? How far setback are you on the second floor?
So, so what would happen is, you're going to see on this next one that we're literally 40 feet and 50 feet on the north. So we're quite a ways in.
Okay.
Yeah, and the setback being required at 23 feet. So you'll see that that's significant. Renee, please, again. 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 And again. Okay, so to that question right there, was that you're seeing as far as 46, six over here, and I'm sorry, 46, eight, and then 53, two for the second floor. The other part that you do have in your code is that front entrance, which is a Flemish gable entrance. Maximum is 14 feet. We are 14 feet. The actual roof ridge line is at 29, eight, and your maximum is 33.
Four inch.
Yep. Just wanted to be sure.
Three feet under the FAR. Yeah. Yeah. We caught a lot.
Just trying to say that we're under. Next, please. Okay, so these are your side elevations. This is the north elevation where we do have side loaded garages. Again, we're emphasizing the setbacks that are off the water. Obviously, the second floor is the fifty foot mark. We're at fifty foot ten. The one that we will be discussing is the bottom portion that you see there, which is at that forty foot eight and three quarters. Next, please. This is actually the south elevation. Next. Next. Similar setbacks, obviously, as the north. I'm sorry, go ahead, Renee, the next one. So this is the west elevation facing the water. Next, please.
Gary, can I just hold on that?
Sure.
My site's fairly good, but I couldn't work. I guess couldn't.
Twenty eight percent.
Have the glass?
Is that with the glass on the rear?
What's the percentage glass on the? There's an awful lot of glass.
Yeah, I thought I saw twenty eight, but let's take a look at it.
I just couldn't read it on the.
This is my boss, and she is supervising me right now, so just wanted to go easy.
Let's go to that page. Let's go to eight three oh one. I think I saw twenty percent. West facade calculation.
Yeah, we have a full set. We'll pull it out right now.
It comes in bright.
Yeah. Twenty eight percent. Do you see it?
I haven't found it yet. Okay, yeah, thank you.
On the part that Renee just highlighted and read, that will be the part that we are discussing with regards to the one story element that is at forty feet, eight and three quarter inches. And then on the south side is a trellis arbor, if you will, coming off of a guest bedroom. One of your criteria is that the additional, or I should say this appendage cannot be more than twenty feet in height. We are actually at fourteen feet. So we are definitely well below that one, even though we're not well below of other things. Next, please.
That's the the roof peak, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you go ahead, Renee, a couple more times. Let's see. Again, again, and one more. Okay, so this is our proposed landscape plan. One of the things that's unique about this property is that it does have a big tree that does need to be remained. Our design is working around that tree. We do have our true two driveway entrances that go around it. We also have proposed Calusa hedge eight foot going around the entire property. And then we are just highlighting that we do have the side loaded garages along the north side. Renee, next, please. This is just our landscapes rendering, basically showing how from adjacent properties, there is a lot of vegetation and consistent hedge that will be screening our property. Next, please. This is obviously looking west. You're seeing an affinity edge, our pool looking out at the basin. Next, please. So here's the part that is part of that special exception when you're looking at some of the standards that we'll be dealing with. With regards to, as I stated before, although the code talks in that first section about, it's basically saying what is reduce the lesser of the following, it gives you four items, thirty feet. We're looking at that being the closest to the water, and we're actually further in at the forty. We also started looking at, we we took some drone shots, and we're looking at how we think this code is meant to be interpreted and how you're trying to protect people. Next, yeah, so here's our rendering. We're just highlighting, these are the two elements that are coming out at that forty foot mark. The second floor, which you're seeing our balcony up there, that is at that fifty foot ten mark. Next, please. Okay, so here's our basin. Next, please. I think one of the criteria we talked about in in your code and everything is basically are we being uniform with the rest of the what we call waterscape? We feel we are. We've zoomed in here. Oh, well, actually, Renee zoomed in. Next, please. Okay, so we superimposed our site plan, and part of some of the criteria is you look at your adjacent properties. We didn't look at the one just to the north because we we felt it actually is not on the water. You look at taking the averages of those two, you actually would come up with forty six feet. So we're still not at that lower number of thirty. But here's what you're seeing for the views. Obviously, the adjacent properties, you do not want to try to create any thing that's going to block their views of the water. Next, please, Renee. So there's that forty foot eight mark, and there's that property right there. If you hit it one more time, Renee, that probably goes down about fifty feet to the east, but I think their primary views are still well protected. Even when you start looking at our forty foot, there is a lot of vegetation that's on their side of the property. So I do think that their view has been protected, the same with the other ones.
Is there a way to blow up that last screen?
We didn't get this either, and this is excellent. Thank you. Very helpful, but.
Yeah, in fact, can I just add to what Bob said? Gary, with all of this, where you've got arrows in the heights, if we could, any future presentations, if we could have that, it's really very clear. You know, it gives us a better insight.
No problem. This was, no matter what, it's our fault. Well taken. We this was a last minute thing. We didn't realize we had this issue. But we do think it does. It demonstrates a lot. You get to see the surrounding areas, which is great.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions on this particular slide? Okay.
I have a question for you. So your property on the south side.
Sorry.
Yeah, the property on the south side of you, what is their landscape? What's the condition of their landscaping up out there by the water?
I, um, we just took a drone shot from above. I don't know how it was.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious, because it's supposed to be a certain height.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, no, I'm not sure.
Okay. To to protect your views.
Got it.
Yeah, so anyway, I was just curious. Are you putting a new seawall in, Jethi?
Yes, she is.
Yeah.
It's going to be going under a separate permit, but yes, she is.
Okay. And this is wastewater is tapping into the line or?
Her wastewater?
Yeah.
Oh, we haven't, well, I'm assuming that's what we're doing. We haven't, but we haven't even got to our engineers yet.
Okay.
This is definitely for this board only.
Yeah.
Provided that we get
I saw.
Positive feedback, we will be going to our engineers.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and this is just, you know, going over the architecture. Again, it's the Bermuda style. We're trying to go by the guidelines, incorporate. One of the things that we did was the ground floor. We actually have crown molding for the roof eaves going around. On the second floor, we actually have decorative outlookers.
Can you show that the crown molding?
Yeah.
Could you, Zach, you got these?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
And then it changes there. This that forces that appendage that we're sticking out towards the water. Next, Renee. As you're seeing, we do have some decorative arbors that are going from the entrances onto the back of the property.
Like a pergola?
Yeah.
Yeah, fun.
And then again, we have outdoor shower, but we also, there's that other element that we talked about that went to the forty foot mark, which is the trellis. Next, Renee. That being the proposed rear facing the water. You know, you look at the second floor balcony, we have what you call the chip and day railings. We have Bahamas shutters and actually plantation shutters that will be shutting. Next, please. And that concludes our presentation. You happy to answer any questions, should you have?
Thanks, Gary.
What one question? Have you decided on the hardscaping, the material for the hardscaping?
Oh, she, yeah, I mean, we're showing papers, but she hasn't selected anything yet. I think one of the things we're doing is she has hired her contractor based on today. She was going to have a meeting with us all next week, and we were going to actually start bringing in stuff. The landscaper was providing stuff. I know she is bringing an interior designer, and for some reason, our interior designers tend to go to the outside, so I have a feeling all that will be selected.
Thank you.
Any feedback from neighbors?
Nope.
Yeah, on the back part, the fifty foot for the setback would.
Would the ones.
Yes.
Thank you.
How do you feel about that, Penny?
I'm fine with that.
That's a pretty good criteria.
I think it's a very nice sound, frankly. I applaud you. I like it, yeah. I don't, I don't really see anything. I so we're we're going from fifty to forty.
Yeah, I said that this is miswritten, but that's all right. Yeah. No, sorry. Let's take the board, and then I'll make the recommendation. Nothing to do with the motion.
We don't have a landscape plan, correct?
Yeah.
You should.
Way at the back is the elevations, but that's it. Yeah, it's at the back of the tree at the driveway.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, that's, no, no. Thanks. There's no more comment. Motion is taking account of what you said about the it's forty feet, not thirty.
Penny, would you like to see this?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special exception to reduce the rear setback from fifty feet to forty feet as per section seventy dash seventy five J rear setbacks for waterfront lots in the core district.
Could I have a second, please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Camfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a level three architectural site plan review for construction of seven thousand four hundred and sixty four square foot two story Bermuda style, single family dwelling with a two point five garage and swimming pool.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Camfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doherty?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And can I now make a recommendation when this goes to the commission? The arrows, everything you have showing the arrows, it's much clearer.
Got it.
Like that as opposed to.
It proves your point.
It just proves your point, and it's so much easier to.
To see.
Yeah.
I also like the way you superimposed the plan over the.
The lot.
Yeah, excellent.
Just came up with that idea last night.
Yeah.
Literally last night.
Well, yeah, it's just made all the requirements and the numbers and the rear setback, class exposure.
Yeah, that would be my request, please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And also the papers, if there's a chance to tell, you know, by the time.
Yeah, we should be able to have that by the time we go to the commission.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Moving on. Any items by board members to be raised? No. Items by staff?
We we have received an application for an ARPB alternate, so ideally, we'll get that approved at the next meeting, and then we will possibly have.
Hi.
If if we can get everyone here, and it's still in season, you know, have a sort of a workshop, maybe after one of our meetings where we don't have a lot of applications. You know, so we did have an application day that had a special exception that is very common. They met the criteria as the board found, and it was, you know, the special exception was for waterfront lots in the core district. I think that every waterfront lot in the core district that we've seen in the last, you know, since I've been here, has always asked for that special exception. So that's that is very common. I don't know if there's any other items that the the board would be interested in covering. If you're just looking at, you know, we've had a lot of variances. We could go over variances. We could go over the various special exceptions. Architectural, and you just, we could hit the high points, and I didn't know if there was anything else that that the board wanted to cover specific to, I mean, we can talk about ex parte communication, communications with staff. You know, things like that. So everyone has a, especially some of our newer members really understand, oh, well, when I talk to Greg about an application, that's not an ex parte communication, right? I think there may be, especially for new members, a misunderstanding like, oh, well, no, I did talk to staff about it. Well, that's not something that you would need to declare because you're encouraged to talk to staff about applications, right? Things like that. So in in sort of putting this together, thinking we'll we'll go hopefully with, you know, sometime, if not next meeting, the following meeting. If we have a lot of the members available, are there any additional things that you would want me to touch on?
Maybe since this eight foot N A V, you know, over the, that is going to create issues with these fences more and more. I have a feeling, I guess, in those core lots, maybe we need to, are we going to maybe think about changing that or not, or?
So the the impact that, I mean, that's a town commission decision, certainly, and that's something that that we could bring up. The issue with that is if you if you change the code, I mean, and again, this is something for the town commission, so maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but you know, if you if you increase, no, no, but but if you do, if you do increase, you know, I mean, it could maybe be a special exception where, you know, the the neighboring lot is lower or something like that. But typically, once you change the code, then all of a sudden, you know, you know, Georgette has an eight foot wall from her neighbor, even though the the lot line is level, right? So now, all of a sudden, you have an extremely high wall or fence as opposed to what it's limited at at six feet now. But that's certainly something we can look into now. You know, your your general floodplain elevation, stuff like that, that's really handled at a staff level largely. The floodplain administrator looks at you know, what the finished floor should be in those criteria.
Yeah, I just have. Oh, yeah, believe me, we've given that a lot of thought.
Okay, all right. I think the other thing is you mentioned that you perceive direction from the commission to be more not assertive, but that's this and this. That's going to apply to barriers as well. Is that correct?
It will not.
It will not.
No.
Okay, so basically, it's that it'll stay, meet the eight points, and we have our options. Great.
But we will, I mean, the staff will have our opinions as to those eight.
We need that, guys.
So you guys can talk to us and like we did.
Yeah.
I mean, it's safe to assume staff is not going to recommend a variance. But, you know, staff has been directed by various outside attorneys over the years, and I'm referring to Greg and and conversation that we've had to just not make a recommendation because it muddies the water. It it's very hard to meet all those criteria. I don't think staff would ever be in a position to to support a variance. It's very subjective. There are those criteria. You know, so I we're going to continue to maintain that, but like Greg said, he will certainly have his thoughts and opinions on that, and you can certainly, when we do have a variance, you can talk to him before the meeting.
Trey, I think it might be important when we do this for some of the newer members, because I remember it took me a long time to kind of figure it out that even if it fits a lot of you know, the points, you know, say the house does. There's that subjective part that, you know, it might be trending towards more modern Bermuda or this. And in the beginning, I don't think I really realized that. I could be like, ooh, no, I thought, oh, it fits everything. But like you said, that's your guys' job, figure out the size and the, you know, if the colors are right, whatever, but it's up to us to see if it actually fits in the town.
Yeah, right. That's absolutely right. So I'll touch on that as well, that there are a lot of artistic or subjective criteria within architectural design that staff may not realize. I mean, we had the the glass rear railing in in Place A soleil, right? You know, that that kind of made it through, whereas that is a very modern feature. And, you know, staff, when we look at at plans, things like that will slip through when it's very important that, you know, we had a resident here that said, wow, you can really build a seventy four hundred square foot building on that lot. You absolutely can. There was no special exception. It was your your point three three of your first twenty thousand, and then your point, you know, so it's that that smaller diminishing percentage of the lot, but but that is absolutely permitted, and we want to make sure that we get that, like Gary had in his presentation, what are the eve heights? What's the building height? That is all extremely important, and that's really the things that, you know, when I'm looking at, when Renee and Greg are looking at it. You know, because again, we try to all get our hands in it because those are the important things. Are the setbacks are important? Is there a minor accessory structure? Is there a fire pit? That needs to be a certain distance. Is there a generator? I mean, all the different things that come into it. And we look at the plan, and you know, and I think the general consensus for this application was the home is very beautiful, but but. But like, okay, what, what are we missing? What can we, you know, look at? And that's something that we, we do our best, but we certainly rely on our boards to say, okay, well, no, I'm looking at, this is the first time you kind of assume here, staff has a staff report. Here's the numbers. Here's the eve heights. Here's the permitted. Here's what they're, what they're asking for. Is there a special exception? You, you make sure that you review that and have all that information, but staff kind of generates that largely with pre-application meetings and then a thorough review of the application. So I absolutely.
And that's what we caught this last time, and that's why he didn't have that stuff in your packet, because we caught that special exception when they, we were like, you, you're too close or too far.
Right.
Whatever it was, but we caught it. We said, you need to add a special exception. So that's why it wasn't in your packet, because we caught it after he had already.
And to what Mrs. Smith is talking about, the best example was the house that we had on the south end. What's the name?
Is it on Pelican?
On Pelican. Took six months to get through because, I mean, when it originally came in, it, to the staff, it, it was a contemporary house. And so we went through two or three iterations of that house before, you know, they finally got it so it looked like the rest of the neighborhood. And so you're exactly right. I mean, if we, you know, I mean, we'll work through it, but we're going to be aggressive in pointing that out as we do these pre-applications to people, and sometimes they listen and sometimes they don't.
I was going to say, that's not, that's not to say that staff does not counsel them on architectural design as well, but it, it's a lot easier to come to the board and the board tell them. I mean, staff, it's like, okay, well, you guys, you know, I'm going to try it, but then they get to the board and they say, oh, well, they are serious about the design criteria.
And in that regard, I think the commission is looking for both the staff to be more aggressive as we work with them in the beginning, and, and then the board to pay more attention to that before.
I think to build on what Trujette was saying, if we can have specific examples that we've seen come through here, the one that jumps out at me was the one in Plaza Soleil, not the door shaver one, but the one across from, from my house. Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we went through several iterations.
They had the garage, I think, yeah. That was last summer when you were, you were here. Because that was one where we felt we met everything, but I know there were some comments from the commission that didn't line up with what we were looking at. So I'd be, I'd be curious to hear how they came to some of their conclusions, so we can keep that in mind.
So those are two houses that did have to go through several meetings before it was finally accepted.
For me, it was some of their questions on the size and the special exception for the 300 foot roof line over their patio or whatever, all things that we felt were within code, but comments that the commission made that they didn't really want to see, so.
I'm sure the commission, it continues to be very resistant over the 300 square foot special exception, which is why Gary's project did not include it, because we counseled him as such, and, and he was able to make it work without that.
Has there been any discussion about getting rid of that 300 square feet for a new build?
I don't think there, there has. I know that we're, you know, Paul Lyons and Greg are looking at encouraging single-story homes in, I don't know if it's in the core or, or townwide. So I think that's going to be part of a larger discussion about controlling massing, and that very well may, may be part of it.
But the 300 exception, we've granted that quite a bit.
Absolutely. I mean, it.
Good heavens. Every new house, it seems like, but I was shocked I didn't see it on this one. And I think there's some of the commissioners that have, that are of the opinion that with a new, newly built house that they shouldn't. You don't need it.
I'm with that, because to me, a special exception, a new build is you've got a blank sheet of paper. A special exception is for people who, through no fault of their own, they've got a house that was built, and here, full decoration, you know, my house was probably 1975. And some people face challenges, and it's trying to help them. But the idea of, you know, we've got this, we started from buying a piece of paper, it's just trying to get as close as possible to the, you know, to actually exceed.
And, and, and that's absolutely valid, and that's the way the commission sees it, you know, and Rita Taylor, when she was here, felt the complete opposite. She said the 300 square feet, you have certain concessions that you have to make that encourages a different, a variety of architectural design. If you get your 300 square feet of open and enclosed area as a concession within your maximum permitted FAR, you have to lose 600 square feet because it's two square feet for everyone, right? So now all of a sudden, you have your build, and then you get your extra 300, but now if you look at the total covered area, you have 900 square feet that is covered and open. So it's porches, it's patios, it's all this, this, you know, balconies, it's the, the area, you know, in front, like we just saw on the Gary's project. I don't think that, I think that was a trellis, but imagine if that was a covered area, you know, that allows for, you know, different spaces and a variety of designs. So that was, that's right. So, so those are the, the two different arguments, and I think that very much like Malcolm said, we're, we're dealing with a commission and, and a, a city that is concerned over massing. And if you add 300 square feet, I mean, it's going to be bigger, right? So that, that's, that's why you're hitting up against that.
600 inside, right?
It would, it would be part of the maximum permitted. So if you're, if you're allowed up to fourth 4,000 square feet, your total would be 4,300, but 600 under that 4,000 would have to be open and enclosed. So you're losing, you know, you're, you're losing air conditioning space, you know. So you've got your garage, you've got everything else that comes with that. That's covered and closed. But then you have to give up.
Some air conditioning inside living space.
Absolutely.
To get the outdoor where people, that's the modern thing. People want the outdoor living.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
So I.
So, so that's, that's why they're, you know, we can spend all day talking about that. I'll tell you, that's, that's, that's a, that's a big, big issue.
Now, by the way, if they were to do a one-story house in the home we just approved, those setbacks would go away.
Absolutely.
What are they, like 15 feet? I'm drawing a.
So it's 30% of the lot width with the, the smallest area being 15 feet. So it could be 15 feet from the property line. Absolutely.
Think about that. Your neighbor, in this case, 40 feet on one side of 50, that's a huge setback. Really nice. Yeah, that's a huge lot. Yeah.
Any more counts, items? In that case, thanks, everybody. I adjourn the meeting.